Again with our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are going to hear from our newly appointed Police Chief Stuart Van Hooser in a minute, but of course, others have to speak first. And we'll hear from County Manager Dr. Jackie McMorris. She will talk a little bit about the process. Then some opening remarks from County Commission Chairwoman Lisa Cupid. Public Safety Director Randy Kreider will then introduce our new Police Chief. And out here as well in the audience Sergeant Wayne Delk with Cobb PD is here. Should you require any sort of more information about the new Police Chief following this meeting. So I introduce our County Manager, Dr. Jackie McMorris.
Thank you Ross. Good morning, everyone. Just wanted to thank you, appreciate that acknowledgement. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Just want to talk a little bit about the process. We followed our normal process as we look at hiring any positions within Cobb. As you all probably recall, our former Police Chief retired in December. And right after that, we went to work with posting this position nationally. And we also targeted particular areas where we wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to apply for this position. We received over about 50 something applications initially. And our selection committee narrowed that down to about five or six applicants in which to consider. They interviewed four and recommended those four to me and the Public Safety Director, Randy Kreider. He and I also interviewed four candidates and narrowed it down to three to share with our Board of Commissioners. I can tell you, we had a lot of really good qualified applicants. But we're very proud to say today, we strongly believe we have chosen the most qualified, best suited Police Chief for Cobb County. And that is in Chief Van Hooser. So we feel very strongly that he is going to take Cobb and our Police Department into truly 21st century policing. He is a man of integrity. He has over 32 years of experience in law enforcement in various areas of law enforcement. So we are very fortunate here in Cobb to be able to choose someone from within our own ranks, someone from home, someone who grew up here in Cobb, who has lived here, who has raised his children here, who has a family here, who has strong ties to Cobb. So we are blessed, we are grateful, we are thankful for this opportunity to share him with you. And you will hear from him in a few minutes and get to know him as we have and as the committee has gotten to know him, not only as a law enforcement officer, but as a man, a family man here in Cobb. So thank you today for being here. And I will ask Chairwoman Cupid to come and share a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris, for outlining the process for our selection of our Police Chief and for speaking to the quality of the Chief that we appointed today. This was not an easy decision for the Board of Commissioners. We've had extremely qualified candidates and very lengthy deliberation about who would be best to take Cobb County into the future. We know that this was a tough decision made in a very tough climate when it comes to policing, especially considering all that has transpired, not just locally, but nationally. And recognizing those circumstances, we felt it was very important that we come together and stand in support of our new Police Chief. The man that we supported to become Chief is someone that has truly taken our hearts and our minds. And we've learned in his interview about his story here in Cobb County. And we have a perception of sometimes of who is on the other side of the tracks. And when we listen to him, we learn that that is something that can transcend color. A lot of times, it speaks to the lot we have in life by way of our economic standing. And our Chief has not had an easy path here in our county. But he took that path of challenge that he had to see how he can use those experiences to serve others. And one of the things that captivated us was just his level of empathy for everyone, which is not a quality that you typify for those in uniform and those leading public safety. But his ability to be able to recognize the humanity, yes, of the victim, but also of those engaged in an act of crime. And that, I think, is a foundation that allows us to transcend some of the challenges that are associated when people have experience with officers, is feeling as if they are recognized as something less than human or debased. And we appreciated that. But not only his ability to be able to relate to people, but for his ability to relate to his officers and his consideration of the profession. He cares about all that he serves with, and he cares about the badge that he has on. His integrity was shown in his experience with Internal Affairs, where we typically think of officers policing those in the community, where he had to police those within his department. And what we learned about his experience doing that, knowing that some of the decisions that he made would impact his trajectory within the department, he was willing with the integrity of that badge to make the right decision. Not necessarily because it was right for the department, but because it was right for the profession. And as I heard him say, right is right is right. And we felt like in times like this, we need to trust somebody who knows when right is right and can speak directly to that. So I believe that our new Police Chief is a person of integrity that we can trust, even in the times of challenge. He's also someone of humility. Very rarely do you have an experience of an interview where someone doesn't just speak of their accolades, but he was speaking of the accomplishment of others within his department. And he said, "I can't take credit for this, but I acknowledge this was a good thing." And that was something that was unique to him, to recognize others. And knowing that what we do as leaders is not an act that we do as individuals, but we do this as part of a team. I felt that not only could he be trusted by us on the board, but by those who he served within the department. Not only is he someone, I believe is a person of good character, but he's someone who thinks strategically. And this is something that also separated him. I served with DC Van Hooser as a District Commissioner of the South Cobb area. And there he was, Major of Precinct Two. And we've had a lot of Majors in Precinct Two, which covers the Six Flags area and Mableton, as well as some parts of Powder Springs and South Marietta. With all the crime that we had going on in the Six Flags area, when everybody addressed crime as a crime issue, and crime was something that always seemed to be rampant in that area, Major Van Hooser was the first person to say, "This is not a crime issue. This is a community development issue." And instead of just looking at crime as being an entity that stands on its own, he looked at what is the root cause of the crime? And he started to bring together businesses and the landlord of multiple complexes there. And through working with them strategically, we were able to get crime down to unprecedented levels, because he didn't look at crime just as being crime. And I think it gets back to what I said before. He looked at it being a circumstance of people, and he was able to see it that way. And I think it enabled him to see outside the box. So he can think strategically. But not only can he think strategically with what's in front of him and looking at people, he has the ability to think strategically when it comes to technology. So living in the Six Flags area, being a person of color, and also being an avid community member before serving in office, I know policing was a very serious matter in that community. And it was a serious matter because it was often felt as if it was a racially charged phenomenon. So having someone to have the ability to see you as an individual versus being just a person who fits the description of being black, person of X height, wearing a red shirt, means something, a little bit more when you're dealing with communities of color. So being able to use technology to identify who's bringing crime to our community was very important, because to address crime was not just about addressing crime on its face, it was about making sure that you were addressing crime and not criminalizing the community in the process. And we were able to do that with the introduction of technology, with the license plate readers, that we're able to identify vehicles associated with prior crime, and to be able to pinpoint who is bringing in challenges to the community. So as opposed to just blanketing everyone there, he's looking, or the team is now looking, the department is now looking specifically for vehicles that have been involved in certain incidents, and be strategic about it. And that means a lot, to be able to integrate technology in a way that makes a community not feel the target, but makes that criminal be the target in communities that often feel like they're blanketly targeted for crime. I shared at a retreat when we first started with this new board in 2020, that as I was packing my car to go to the retreat, I heard gunshots right by my house so loud, me and my husband ducked by our car, because I lived in the Six Flags community at the time. And I felt this is completely unreasonable for any resident to have to endure this. And I lived in that community and heard gunshots many a night. And at that retreat, I shared, "This is just, it's not excusable. It's not excusable for the Chair of this County, and it's not excusable for any citizen of this County." And I'm grateful for Chief Van Hooser taking the initiative to introduce technology into the community that will be able to help us detect gunfire. And they're getting started with the real-time call center, and he's leading that. So when I talk about Chief Van Hooser, I'm speaking about someone who brings a lot to the table, someone who brings a lot, by the way, of their experience here in Cobb, as a person who's lived here, who's experienced challenges here, as someone who cares about all people here, as someone who's able to think holistically about what crime is in their community, someone who's able to think strategically about how to address crime, and someone who's able to think about crime in the future of how we can use technology to address crime. One last thing I wanted to add about him being strategic, and I'm sure you're going to have nothing to say, Chief. You know, part of my plight as being a Commissioner in the south part of the county was getting the county to put forward the apt amount of resources to the area that had the most amount of crime. And I used to say that, and I felt like I was talking to a brick wall, until I talked to you, because you got it. The areas that are hemorrhaging are the areas that need help the most, or else they become a threat to every other area. And you got that. So I can stand here very confidently and say, "I feel like we are selecting the right person for this position." I'm glad to be here today to stand behind him and with him. I'm glad our Commissioners are here today to stand with him as well. And we want to let you know that we look forward to serving alongside him to make Cobb County continue to be a safe place that people want to live and work in and visit in. With that, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for stepping up to the plate, and I'm honored to have you as our Chief.
Good afternoon. I'm Public Safety Director Randy Kreider. And this is a great day for Cobb. Over the last five months, I've had the pleasure to work very closely with Deputy Chief Van Hooser and Deputy Chief Hamilton. And both of these are incredibly smart men. They have done a great job in the absence of having a Police Chief as the acting Police Chief over the past five months and rotating that. And I can tell you, just speaking more specifically about Deputy Chief Van Hooser, for 32 years now, I've had the opportunity to work in areas around Stewart. And it speaks volumes when you know someone who came into the profession at the entry level and watch what they do throughout their career and the consistency with that and the integrity that he showed all the way through the ranks, speaks volumes of who he is as a person. Without taking away any of the ideas that he's going to present to you, I will say this to you. First and foremost, he's going to do what's right. He's going to do what's right by his officers, but he's also going to do what's right by the community. And when there's conflict with that, he's going to do what's right. And I will say to you, and I think the officers in the Cobb County Police Department know this, that he's going to hold you accountable, but yet he's also going to have expectations of you to maybe adjust your mindset on policing if you need to make that adjustment, and that is that community sometimes is the outlet or the tool that you use to help police a community. And I know that he is committed to developing and even enhancing the current relationships that we have with those in our community, because he's a strong believer that without the community's support, they cannot do their job as police officers in a police department. So I come to you today just to let you know that I also am very confident with who has been selected as the Police Chief. The ideas that he has to use technology to continue to keep our community safe is something that grabbed my attention over the last five months. And so it's with great pleasure that I introduce to you our next Police Chief in Cobb County, Deputy Chief, now Police Chief Stuart Van Hooser.
Well, good morning. My name is Stuart Van Hooser, and the accolades that you heard just now are very misleading. I honestly, I wish I could speak with the articulation that Chairwoman Cupid can. It was amazing. And I am truly humbled by the words that she said, but more than that, I'm burdened. I love my community, I love my police officers. And that is really what has driven me from pretty early in my career until today. And I really have never lost the passion for this job. And my poor family knows this, they know that I think a lot about this job, and I have a lot of ideas about this job, because it drives me, because I think it's important. What we do as police officers is something that nobody else can do, and we need to realize that. The impact that we can have on people every single day is really beyond what we recognize because we do this every single day. We don't realize what a traffic stop means to a citizen. We can make their day better during that traffic stop, even if we issue them a citation, or we can make their day worse, just by our attitude and just by how we treat them and talk to them. So, thank you, Commissioner. I really don't know what to say. I'm blown away at the opportunities I've been given since I was a young man. And I am so grateful that y'all have given me this opportunity. I recognize how hard this decision was. I'm not sure I could have made it. There were so many good people in the application process. And I'm one of many that could have done a fantastic job here. So I do thank you. I thank you, Dr. McMorris, and all those who were involved in the process of this. Today, I want to talk about three things. The first thing that I want to talk about, really, Chairwoman Cupid set up so perfectly for me, it's what our officers do. And what I think we can do better with is conveying this to our community consistently and without fear, because there are parts of our job that sometimes are not looked upon favorably, but they are necessary. And when you go work in areas that need the police, you recognize how valuable the things that the police do are. And so what I want to do first is just recognize what the officers and civilians who do this job every day, and civilians also work at night, they're also working overnight, helping the officers in the field do their job. It's not just the officers. The officers put themselves in harm's way, and they do a fantastic job. But I want to share just a little bit with you guys about the impact of our officers and what they do. And then I'm going to move to my second point, which to me, really rounds out what you just heard from our Commissioners on this. So that is a representation, and it's not an unusual representation of what our police officers do. I got an email from one of our units, and they were telling me the business of their week. And they detailed in small paragraphs and then gave pictures for each thing that they did that week. And honestly, when I read it, and I read them every week, these are not unusual. I read them every week, and I can't help but fear for our citizens and our officers, because those guns are all guns that were used in criminal activity. They get the guns, and they get the people that are committing these violent acts. It's very dangerous, and it causes the bosses to worry about them and pray for them and pray for our community. At the very bottom was the picture on the right. And when I saw that picture, I wrote them back an email that, "You think you can take a bunch of big, mean-looking police officers and make them tear up a little bit?" I articulated to them how incredible that last picture is, because that young lady is why those police officers put their life on the line every day for this community. And they do it every night without a whole lot of recognition in most areas. That kind of brings me to my next point, and that is this amazing community in Cobb County. And I don't know how to articulate it any better than this board just stated it. We have incredible support here for our police officers. They understand. Our community pays tribute to our officers regularly. Our officers take things from our community, like weapons and offenders, and they give things to our community, like badge stickers on that picture, like Christmas gifts. We had a great time last Christmas. We served a single mom with five children. That's how I grew up, a single mom with five kids. That's how I grew up. We helped them. They were living in an extended stay. That's what we do behind the scenes. I could go on for a while. There's a young man that bought bicycles for kids in a complex that we worked at. I could go on, and believe me, the stories are unending about both the safety of the community, the examples of what our officers do for the safety of our community, and the examples of what they do from their heart to just show our community that they love them. But both things they are doing is an expression of their love and concern for this community. But they can't do that. They can't do that in an environment that is not supportive of law enforcement. And that's the second thing I want to talk about, is this incredible community that we have in Cobb County that supports us and helps us. Yesterday, I met with community leaders, some of whom are standing here behind me, and those relationships will grow. They have supported us. They have supported our officers through some tough times with controversial issues that happened in Cobb County. And when I say standby, I don't mean saying that they did something right when they did something wrong, not at all. I mean, they practiced what we all preach, which is procedural justice, just fairness for all, fairness for our citizens, fairness for our officers. In Cobb County, we enjoy something that we saw today in our BOC meeting, Austell Community Task Force coming together and just for no other purpose than to get with our Commissioners and say thank you to the officers that work the area that Chair- and say thank you to the officers that work the area that Chairwoman Cupid was just referring to, no other reason. These are things that make Cobb County very, very special, and it gives our officers the ability to actually go do their jobs without fearing some of the repercussions that have been seen in other regions. The community support here is truly amazing. It's different, and our crime is different, and our safety is different. We have a very safe county. We have lower crime. The officers and the community together have done this. This is not something the police do alone. This is something the police do with the community. And we talk about community policing until we're blue in the face, but community policing is about being safer with our community. We don't go into the community, take someone out who's caused harm, and they don't see us again until there's another incident. No, we collaborate with our community. Most of the technology projects that we have done have been collaborations with local companies where we tested products here in Cobb County, and we made amazing reductions in crime that were astounding. So, community policing is what we do in Cobb County, and it really means something, and it's about safety. And I think we all know with the recent news stories what it means when we forget that that's our job as a community. Our job is to be safe, and our community helps us do that here. They support law enforcement. So, those two points come to my third point, and that is this: We need help. Cobb County Police Department, if this, what we do, we do for the right reasons in Cobb County. This is our latest class that just graduated from mandate. Those are a sampling of what we welcome and want here at Cobb County. We want people that are willing to put their brains and minds to work together to make Cobb County safer and to make Cobb County better. We have openings. We are hiring. We welcome everyone. My background, if you look at me and make a judgment on my background, that is probably, you're probably going to make the wrong judgment. When I got this job from the Cobb County Police Department, I lived in a basement in Mabelton, and when it rained, I would get a couple of inches of water in that basement, and I was making about $5.25 an hour. I had no skills. I had nothing special. I had no military. I had no prior police. I had no education. And Cobb County Police Department hired me. They put me in a little bitty thing called a BEAT, which is an area where officers work. They gave me one little section of earth to protect for eight hours. And from there, I fell in love with this job. I came from pretty much nothing. And if there are people out there thinking that you have to be someone special, or look a certain way, or be from a certain background, that is not true. All you have to do is be willing to do something great for your community, to take on a challenging career that is the most rewarding career you will ever have in your life. I can look back on 32 years, I didn't regret one minute of this job, ever. It's an amazing job. And, believe me, your family recognizes what you do. This is a meaningful job. I am going to finish this with a little something about my family and about families in general. Police work is very difficult on families, and they work shift work, they miss ballgames. I had a fireman coach my kids in soccer, which was pretty frustrating, because you're just not able to be there as much as you want to be. You work evening shift, you work overnight, we call that morning watch, and then you get lucky and you get to go to day shift for a while until you get promoted, and then you go back to evening watch or morning watch. So, it's a tough job, but I'm going to tell you something. There's no better job to do with your family. They suffer with you, but they know what you do, and they have pride, which I just learned recently from my children in going through this process, how much pride they have in what the county does and what the police department does. I will say this, it's a tough job. I would not be standing here right now if it was not for my wife and my sons, one in particular who still lives at home, who I asked permission to put in for this because of the hours that I knew it was going to consume and the amount of mental energy that it was going to consume, which it is already. And they very much encouraged me to go ahead and put in for this. So, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. I have vision. I have plans. I don't think there's enough time to go into those visions and plans right now, but I want to thank the media for coming out and helping us get the word out about how great this community is and how great our police department is. And again, I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity, and I promise there will be no one that will work harder. I may not do the right thing. I may make a lot of mistakes. I probably will, but I will work hard. I will work as hard as I can until I am finished with this career. So, I thank you very much, and that concludes my portion of this, unless there are questions.
We advertise this as a news conference, so if any of you all have any questions, shoot them out now before the Chairwoman adjourns the meeting.
Chief Van Hooser, how does it feel right now?
You know, I'm going to be completely honest. When I got this job, I expected to retire as an officer. I know that sounds crazy. I didn't really expect to be in supervision. It was never my life's dream to be the chief. I felt called to do this. When I left Precinct 2, I did not feel I completed that job. There were children at Precinct 2 at Premier Learning Academy that I used to go visit, and I would go in my uniform, and I'd put in stickers inside my uniform that I could just pull out. And every kid would get a sticker, and they would climb up the fence during recess, and I would hug them. They would get slobber all over me, and I would just give them sticker after sticker after sticker. They love us. And the reason I would do that is because across from the daycare is a shopping center that is, it's a magnet for criminal activity, and typically there were people ordering there, and they were selling drugs and often armed. And in one of those incidents, there was a shootout that actually one of the bullets hit the school, and the bullet is still there. And I'm going to say this, could y'all retract the name of that school, please? That probably wasn't appropriate for me to say. But at that school, I would hug on the kids, I would go out, and I would look at that bullet hole. And I'm telling you, the motivation to do your job cannot be greater than that, because all I could think about the whole time I was the commander of that precinct was, nothing can happen to these children while I'm the commander here. When I left there, I thought the burden would go away. The burden did not go away, and I'm so happy it didn't. I could do things in my little area of the world now, as a Deputy Chief over the units that I'm over, to actually continue that, and that's what we did. But I did this out of a sense of duty. It's an honor to be the chief, and I'm happy to be the chief, but I'm more burdened than happy right this second. I'm sure the joy will come, but right now, I feel like I have a lot of work to do, and I'm, my mind is churning, planning, and things like that. So, I'm honored. I'm humbled, honestly. There's a part of me that's happy, but the most of me feels like, hey, I've got a job to do, and I need to start doing it very quickly. So, I hope that answered your question.
Chief, you mentioned you've got some ideas that you don't have time to go into all of them right now, but can you give us just a preview of some of the things you're thinking about as far as your leadership?
Well, I'll tell you this, I think in conceptual ideas and concepts that guide us forward. And one of the things, I'll tell you quickly, this is more of an outline than going deep, but I believe in perpetual leadership. We've had leaders come that were incredible leaders. We've had leaders come that were pretty good leaders. And each one of them, many times, would come and attack problems that we had. But there wasn't any continuity, there wasn't a lot of continuity, and I want to fine-tune that continuity and augment great leadership with perpetual leadership, so that we prioritize what we are doing as an agency at the top with collaboration with our community, with collaboration with our command staff and our officers. We have great ideas from the officers. But we prioritize, and the leadership team is in charge of basically making sure that that leadership model continues. We are inventive. We are staying focused on what we need to be staying focused on: Safety, our community, our minds, our work ethic, accountability, procedural justice, all the concepts that we believe in as a society are there and built into a leadership style that continues over time. At the precincts, we pretty much have the same thing. Chairwoman Cupid talked about how many different majors there have been at Precinct 2, and every one of them has incredible ideas, but sometimes there's not really continuity between those majors, addressing the two or three biggest problems that we think we have. So first is a leadership model that is collaborative, not only with the community, but also with some really smart officers that are younger and more creative, and with some of the guys in our command staff that have ideas that may not have surfaced, definitely with our community leaders and with our community in general, collaborating together on these And then, what are we going to lead? What are the things we're going to focus on? One of the things I truly believe is that if we focus on character, we fix so many issues. A chief should impact the character of the people doing the job. The great thing is, we have an incredible background process, and we bring in incredible people if we've done our job right. And then we have an incredible training program where these character issues are refined and reiterated. But as a command staff, we need to grasp and understand that part of the leadership model is to make sure we don't forget those overarching values that everybody believes in. I think if we focus on those, we get so much unity with our community immediately. So, character is probably one of the biggies that I think that leadership model needs to address. Crime and community, I mix together, and I've already talked about that. It's called community policing. We cannot forget what we do for a living. We cannot forget that people die if we don't do our job well. We have a great relationship with our Sheriff's Office, DA, our Magistrate's Office. We work on these problems together. We're not in a bubble where we're pointing fingers at each other. So we have to remember that, and we have to remember that we ought to love our community and be a part of our community to properly police our community. And I don't even like that word, because the police are the community, and the community are the police. That's, I don't know if that is actually proper subject-verb agreement, but that's the quote. But what it basically says is, our community, when they see something, they're going to call 911 because they want that to be corrected. The community, they are the police, and we are the community. We live here. Our kids go to school here. We're all the same. So, community policing is big, and we have to stay focused on that. We have to be creative and energetic with that. And then finally, efficiency. Don't like to duplicate services for our taxpayers. Don't like inefficiency. So, we've got some smart people in the police department, and we've got smart people outside the police department that I watch what they do, and they're doing some pretty neat things, and I will copy them and plagiarize. So, efficiency. So, those are the concepts that I see going forward. But I would like to say this, that's my vision. My vision will be shaped with collaboration over the next few months, and we will have a joint vision that is shared together. So, I know that was a little bit long-winded, but that hopefully answered your question.
Well, something you could expand on what the Chairwoman said about viewing crime as more of an economic development issue?
Well, that's complex, but I can tell you that where you have areas of crime that are notoriously stubborn, which we have had in that region and other regions, that's not just in that area of the county. I can tell you where our most violent area is, and our second most violent, and our third most violent, and then with property crimes, I can kind of tell you about where that is. But you do find some commonalities that are beyond many people's control. Proximity to an urban area is one. Proximity to an interstate is one. But there are many others that are societal. They are incidents of abuse of alcohol, substance abuse, education levels, these types of things. Crime is very, very complicated. In that particular case, what Chairwoman Cupid is talking about, really what we believe, or what I believe, is that there are ways that we can partner with our apartment complex managers in that region, and we did this. We can educate them on some technology they can use. We can also help them manage better. When we have certain complexes that have practices that bring the criminal element in, they need to understand there are ways you can avoid that, and we can help them with that as a partnership. So we did that, and we had some incredible, incredible partners in that region that ended up selling and moving on. But those types of partnerships address something at a little bit higher level. You can't police your way out of this. We've been trying that for the entire time I've been here. So we need to look at some deeper ways to look at that. And again, I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm saying it's the beginning of a conversation, basically. I would like to add one thing to that. I call this precision policing. I think I stole that from Captain Mitchell, who's over our technology unit. But one thing that we are certainly trying to do is be very precise in identifying on the front end who our suspects actually are, because if we can do that, then we detain the correct person more often, and we detain the incorrect person less often. And that right there is a pretty big goal, to do that more often, to get better at that. So that, with some of the technology, that's some of the, not only does it help us capture the offender quicker, but it also helps us lower the risk that we have offended someone and stopped them. And you have to understand, an officer stopping the wrong suspect, the officer is sometimes afraid, not really afraid, that's not the right word, cautious. They're cautious, and they're going to rely on their training, which comes across to the citizen as somewhat offensive. You know, it's, why are you treating me this way? So we want to reduce that, and that's some of the things that we think we can do to enhance security and also enhance community relations at the same time.
All right. Thank you, Chief. He will be around after this meeting, if you need anything else from him for a brief amount of time. Appreciate you, your time up here, and it's a shame you're not enthusiastic about your new job. I'd like to bring up Sally Riddle and Dr. Ben Williams briefly. They're part of the Community Coalition. I met with the Chief yesterday just for some remarks before the Chairwoman bangs the gavel.
Good morning. I'm Sally Riddle, representing the Cobb Coalition for Public Safety, a group of citizen activists who've been working with the Cobb County Police Department now for about seven years, since we formed, on policing and community relations. And Stuart is not new to us. I think I first met Stuart when he was heading up Precinct 2. We have been working with Stuart as part of the executive team since he became Deputy Chief, as well as when he was in charge of Precinct 2. We look forward to continuing the collaboration of supporting the police department in the efforts and Chief Stuart's efforts to make the Cobb County Police Department reach the next level. But as Chief Van Hooser also knows, we will also be quick to challenge when we feel that there's things that need to be considered that perhaps have not been looked at at this point in time. So from both perspectives, congratulations, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Sally. Just very quickly, those of you who look at some footage about new chiefs coming in, me standing up with the new chief is not something new. The process has been conducted, a selection has been made, and our new chief has been selected. selected. So I'm here in person, as I did with his predecessors, to welcome him to his new job and to say to him publicly what I've said to them. SCLC has a long history in the social justice space. That includes criminal justice as well. We have invested major parts of our time in really making sure that the continuity that our new chief referred to because of the transience of folk who come through has some stability. Overall, the community is that continuity. If in fact, when we're in the room, we are more than present, we are also adding value to whatever conversations, decisions that are made, and work to be done. So, our investment is one of a commitment to help us maintain the progress that we've made in Cobb County. So, Chief Stuart, I extend my hand to you, to be there with you, whether I stand by myself or with a legion. If you're right, I will stand up for you and speak out for you. But also, if you're not right, and you want to correct it, I'm there with you, okay? If you want to correct it, I'm there. If you don't want to correct it, then you will find us, and only then, on opposing sides. So once again, welcome, Chief, to your new assignment, and good luck.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, it's good, at least for now, we're all on the same side. And again, thank you. Thank you for stepping up to serve, and thank you for your leadership and your vision for our county. You've brought some special people with you here today, and I'd be remiss if they weren't showcased as much as you were today. So, can the family of our Chief Stuart Van Hooser please join us here? Thank you for being on this ride with us. Thank you for your support of Chief Van Hooser. We look forward to working together and to working with you, and we thank you already. I know you've been engaged in our community, I've seen you at other community events. So, not only do I know Chief Van Hooser is invested, but you are as a family, and I appreciate that. And we're all invested in making Cobb County a safer place. I want to thank all of you for being here today. I want to thank our press for being here today, allowing us to showcase this great achievement that Chief Van Hooser has made in us taking public safety and specifically policing to the next level here in Cobb. Thank you. We will resume our BOC meeting at this time. Do I have to adjourn? Yes, I'm going to adjourn. Oh, I can do it from here, I thought I had to go up at the dais. Our BOC meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.